Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the advertised time and place for the December 5th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as all.
Good evening, everybody. I don't like changing the agenda items, but we're trying to accommodate somebody, so we are going to put Carson Woods Major Subdivision as a discussion item before the scoping hearing. Greg, you want to help us out?
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So this is just a very quick follow-up on the Carson Woods Major Subdivision, which is an eight-lot major residential subdivision out in Kingsport. We had a public hearing on this application back on November 7th last month. At that time, there was a number of residences, a number of residents of the Fox Lane development that came out in response to some of their comments. I do have a preliminary plat approval resolution on. We did incorporate from their comments. If you can see, Chip, can we get the overhead camera to just look at the table?
Can you get the overhead?
Yep. All right, thank you. So as the board will recall, there were the residences on Fox Lane. We're just concerned about a buffer as well as the gentleman that runs the Apple Orchard over here. He was concerned about potential conflicts with the agricultural operation and the residential uses. So I do have in the resolution the incorporation of a 25-foot non-disturbance buffer along what is the western edges of lots 5, 6, 7, 8. That is also exactly consistent with the buffer that was required along the outer edges of the Fox Lane subdivision. And then there was a question about the cul-de-sac at the end of Fox Lane. Now, the Manor Lane Estates subdivision had called for this temporary cul-de-sac to be removed when this lot was developed. I spoke with Mike Zaleski, the Highway Superintendent, as well as our consulting engineer, if there were any issues with leaving that cul-de-sac. Both residents on both sides of Fox Lane were just concerned about what the potential impacts would be to them. Both Vinnie Goyello and Mike Zaleski said that there would be no impacts, no negative reason, you know, no reason why we couldn't leave that cul-de-sac. So in keeping with, you know, just being a good neighbor, we're going to leave that cul-de-sac, and they'll essentially just move the fire hydrant, which will still be moved into the right-of-way over here. It will not disturb that neighbor's tree, which is on his property, so they'll essentially just push through and continue with the Fox Lane extension. Aside from that, I have a pretty standard subdivision preliminary plat approval resolution includes a number of conditions that need to be satisfied before final plat would be approved. I have shared the resolution with Mr. Finnegan. He's reviewed it. They did agree to that 25-foot buffer, so this gets us along and moves the application along, and they can move on with a final plat.
Okay. Any?
Now, we just, there's a lot of engineering comments that we have to review. There's one or two things that Greg and I discussed that the engineers can hash out. But beyond that...
We'll have a resolution on a little later.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the public scoping session. I think we're going to be open for Zoom folks, too, correct? You do? Okay, very good. Once again, with Greg, it's the TJOC Real Estate Holdings subdivision and site plan public scoping session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Greg Bergman, Senior Planner with the Riverhead Planning Department. We are opening up what's called a public scoping session for the draft scope to be used for the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. As you stated, this is for an application. There's actually two applications that are being reviewed by this board for TJOC Real Estate Holdings LLC. It is a vacant 15.8-acre parcel of land located on the north side of Middle Country Road, approximately 700 feet west of the intersection of Middle Country Road and Fresh Pond. It is located between Malosky's Poultry Farm and J&amp;R Steakhouse. The two applications that are being reviewed by the board consist of a major subdivision application, which would subdivide the existing parcel. It would result in seven residential, single-family residential building lots, one storm water management parcel, one parcel on which a sewage treatment plan would be located, as well as the roadway parcel. The site plan application that's being reviewed by this board seeks to develop the lot that is zoned Hamlet Center, which is along the Middle Country Road frontage of the property. It's approximately five acres. That site plan is seeking to develop that portion of the site with a two-story mixed-use development, which will consist of approximately 30,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial uses and 36 one-bedroom apartments on the upper floors, along with related improvements, including parking, landscaping, lighting, and drainage. This project fully complies with the, both the Hamlet Center and the Residence B40 zoning districts in which it is located. Just for a little backstory, the draft scope that we received from the applicant was distributed to involved agencies, and it was made available on the town's website since November 8th. I also did a public service announcement at a recent town board work session just to sort of increase, you know, participation in the draft scoping process. I will just invite people to just keep in mind that this is a draft scoping session. This is not a public hearing on the site plan or the subdivision for or against the application. The purpose of this meeting is to receive comments on this draft scope, which will be used by this board for the preparation of a final scope, which will set the parameters of the environmental review and the items to be studied. I did go through, I will share just a couple of my comments that I prepared for the board on the draft scope. There were some minor changes on Page 1, just referencing a 10-lot subdivision as opposed to nine, and that just accounts for the residential properties, storm water management, sewage treatment parcel, roadway, and the commercial development. Minor correction regarding the zoning district designation, it was listed as HB, it's HC. Page 2, again, just reference to the correct number of lots within the subdivision. I struck the last law, the last sentence on Page 2. There was a comment that said, "It is expected that traffic exiting lots 1 through 9 onto Middle Country Road will be controlled by a stop sign." On my mind, that's a little bit preemptive when we haven't even begun to review a traffic impact study. Moving on to Page 3, there was a comment that said, "With minimal anticipated light-related impacts based on the lighting plan," again, I just struck that because it is a little bit premature. Within the required review permits and approvals, I just did note that the Suffolk County Department of Health Services also will review the subdivision approval. And I did speak with a neighboring resident, Mr. Malosky, just about, he had some concerns about potential impacts and conflicts with the existing agricultural operation and the potential development. So on Page 4, I added a section to be studied about impacts on agricultural resources. It states that the project site is located adjacent to an agricultural operation, Malosky's Poultry Farm, with the agricultural operation requiring a certain level of security from interference from neighboring development, which could result in harm to livestock and potential transmission of pathogens such as bird flu. Just want to have that kind of examined through the EIS process. Page 5, I added in Section 2.0, Natural Environmental Resources. This just sort of stepped, you know, sets out the format that the DEIS will follow, so I added Section 2.3 to account for those agricultural impacts. And at one of the last planning board meetings, member Zilnicki had inquired about potential alternative developments. Right now, the commercial development along Middle Country Road is, for lack of a better phrase, oriented in an east-west direction. Member Zilnicki had wanted to see an alternative site alignment where that commercial building would be oriented in a north-south orientation. And also, Alternative 3, it is worth seeing an alternative development which complies with allowable sanitary densities of groundwater management zone 3. Page 8, on to Page 9, again, I just incorporated some comments and sections on how that agricultural impacts would be measured. I did on Page 9 make one minor addition in terms of the intersections that will be studied through the traffic impact statement. I do recommend the following intersections be studied: Middle Country Road and the Site Access roadway, Middle Country Road and Fresh Pond Avenue, Middle Country Road and Timber Drive, Middle Country Road and New York State Route 25A, and Fresh Pond Avenue and South On Page 10, again, just Section 5.0 in the alternatives, I just incorporated the Alternative 2 with the alternative orientation, and then Alternative 3 with a development scenario which complies with the underlying groundwater management zone 3. So those are my comments for the board, for their consideration for incorporation into a final scope. At this point, I would open it up to any members of the public. I know we have a Zoom available, so I'm sure there will be members who would like to comment. Again, I would just ask to comment on the draft scope, not necessarily for or against the project. This will really help us just establish a final scope and get the best possible review out of this project.
Good job. Thanks, Greg. Anybody from the general public would like to speak? Just need your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Mark Malosky, the owner of Malosky's Poultry Farm, and we just wanted to put a couple of our comments on record. You know, we just, we're thinking about putting a 25-foot buffer between us and the property in question. Also, you know, we need some kind of barrier and of privacy, like something like a chain link in Arbivotes with slats in the chain link would probably work good, because we can't, we look at the road coming into it, coming in, but coming out, it looks like the headlights will come onto our property, especially at night with the turkeys sleeping outside, that would scare them. So we're trying to keep away from that, and, let's see, okay, we're trying to keep away from that. And we also like to request that there be no standing water on the property, such as in a recharge basin or the sewage treatment plant, as this attracts migratory birds, and migratory birds carry disease. And we just want to make sure that the lights, you know, kind of stay on the property, and we'd like to have that studied. And just during the construction phase, if they can just follow the noise ordinance and, you know, keep everything on their side.
Okay.
And I think that's it, and I'll just leave this letter, and you can study it.
Mark, one quick question, Mark. On your, on the west side of your property, you have, on Timber Park, and there are about 14 houses. Have you ever gotten any problems with them, anybody interfering with the turkeys or throwing?
No. Well...
Or if they do, you let them know?
Right, all but one house. There's one house that doesn't have a fence. All the other houses have fence, and actually, I just went to measure how far my fence is away from their fence, and it's been like that for, I don't know, 50, 60 years at least, and I measured 22 feet between our fence and their fence. So that seems like a pretty good buffer, you know, something like that. And the reason we asked for 25 feet, because if they put the Arbivotes there, of course, they're going to grow out and stuff like that.
Right, right.
So we think 20, we don't think we're asking for too much, but we think 25 feet would be a good buffer.
I just have a question for you also.
Yes.
Does your fences go down below the surface of the ground, like to stop predators from burrowing underneath into the yard?
Yes, it goes...
Or is that something that the people, your neighbors do also?
Yeah, actually, my neighbors never try to climb a fence.
I'm talking about like animals trying to...
Oh, animals. We have it, we have it, it's only a couple of inches below ground. Something can dig under it and go into the fence, but we, you know, of course, you have to take care of that problem. You know, if you have to catch something and relocate it, an animal, we would do that.
So if these homes were going in and they were putting up, there was some type of fencing that they should go below the surface of the ground, or your fences provide that? That's what I was...
I think my fences would provide that. We're just worried about the initial phase of construction, because it moves all the animals all around, and, you know, we, of course, we would like to keep it away from our animals, because, you know, there's all kinds of stuff, rats, and we, you know, we'd just like to keep it away. So the hardest part about farming is to making sure everything's clean and sanitary and keeping people and other animals away, and usually you don't have a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mark should be part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Let me see if there's anybody in the public first. Anybody else from the public want to say anything? Okay, take a zoomer.
Karen Kemp, you want to unmute yourself? Hi there. My name is Karen, and I live in Timber Park, which is near this project. I first just want to say thank you to the Planning Department for reaching out to the Calverton Civic Association regarding the TJOC and the draft scoping project. I'm a member of the Civic Association, and I do have some questions and some suggestions that I hope you would consider. First, regarding traffic, I think it needs to be clarified whether this is going to be a new town road or a private road to the housing development, and how this road will be maintained, and who will be responsible for paying on the maintenance. My next, the traffic analysis should include a map or a diagram to demonstrate how the commercial entrance and main driveway will work and how traffic will be managed. I've tried to read traffic analysis, and sometimes it's very confusing, and I think just having a map, you know, demonstrating how it's going to work, I think that's very helpful. And I think the traffic analysis should also include the proposed charter school that's going to be on Fresh Pond and Middle Country Road. That's also right around the corner from this development, so it absolutely should be a part of the analysis. Also, regarding the apartments, they're listed as one-bedroom. However, the apartments should be considered as one-bedroom plus loft or two-bedroom. A one-bedroom apartment suggests one or two people living in the apartment. However, a loft space could easily be a bedroom for a second person. So anything, any analysis should include at least two to three people living in the And I think it would be interesting to have a survey of vacant commercial spaces in the area to determine if a 30,000-square-foot commercial venture will be supported and economically viable in this area. Currently, the Shox at East Wind, it's just down the road, they have spaces available. So those are my points, and I hope you consider them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Anybody else either?
No one with their hand raised. I don't know.
Did you want to speak? Please. Just need your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Kelly, 12 Elm Lane, Stony Brook. I'm the principal at TJOC, and I appreciate the comments, both in person and via Zoom. Again, we've built several communities over the 25 years we've been around, and we look forward to developing this property, and, you know, I appreciate the interaction, so I just wanted to assure you that we'll do everything we can to accommodate and make sense of any concerns from either the department, from the board, or from the neighbors. So I just want to give you some assurances of that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Like, just, if I could just make a comment, I think the comment that was made with regard to the recharge basin and the sewage treatment plan as far as being able to subsurface discharge rather than surface discharge, I think that's an important thing, based on the comment of Mr. Malosky.
All this information...
Yeah, you do, I'm sorry.
No worries.
To that point, one of our engineers is here tonight taking notes. We'll bring that back to the rest of the engineering team and the architectural team to ensure that these questions, concerns are addressed one way, shape, or form. So, you know, the goal of any recharge basin is to ensure that there's no standing water. So if it's designed properly, that base should be porous at best, right, to make sure that it's draining properly. So whatever we can do to ensure it, a lot of that will come with different soil borings to ensure that that, we understand what that soil is actually, what it's like, so we can design it properly.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Someone else on Zoom, I saw a chat pop up. Their hand isn't raised, but I think it's the Calverton Civic icon.
If you're out there, can you unmute?
Hi there, yes, I have. Thank you very much. My name is Talkie Church and Calverton Civic President. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak at the public hearing. I also, along with Karen Kemp, who is on our executive board, I'd like to thank the Planning Department for their letter, which included us as the Civic in the secret process officially and recognizing us as a coordinating agency or involved agency. The area that this will be going in, this project will be going is an environmental justice area, which I'm certain that Greg Bergman's aware of. I just wanted to bring it also to the attention of the board, if you're not already aware. And the outreach to reach folks in the community, including Calverton Meadows, with, I think, maybe over 300 folks live there on the north end of Fresh Pond, would be appreciated. It's not very easy to navigate our town website, as we're all familiar, and would like to make sure that folks there are brought up to speed with each part of this process. If you need contact information there, I could provide it separately. I also would like to add, through the traffic analysis, certainly all of the intersections mentioned and the roads mentioned are very important, and thanks for including them. Additionally, because there are other projects that are in the pipeline on Middle Country Road, and we should assume that there will be more, since we've just come out of our industrial moratorium, and that people who are waiting to put their projects in, maybe much like TJOC, will either have already started or will be starting, and I'd like to make sure that the traffic impact of those proposed projects are considered in total, not to segregate out projects one by one. And intersections I haven't heard mentioned are the north end of Fresh Pond Road, where it meets Sound Avenue, also the Route 25 and Edwards Avenue intersection, where the corrective construction is happening, and as well on the east, on the western end of Middle Country Road, where it splits off and where the light is, where it splits off to 25A, and then additionally to the traffic light across from the cemetery, the National Cemetery, and going into the Epcal property. Looking at those changes and those intersections, I think would make a more complete picture. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other people on Zoom?
No one else has their hand raised, so if anybody else wants to raise their hand and all...
Any other public comments? Want to close it up, gentlemen?
I'll close the subdivision, excuse me, TJOC Real Estate Holdings subdivision site plan, the scoping session, so moved.
Second. Moved in second. Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. All righty, now we can take on public comments on resolutions. No takers. Okay. Gentlemen, let's do the resolutions.
I'll move Resolution 2024-090 for the Malice Property, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
I'm going to vote no on this resolution, because I was hoping that the ZBA would be able to stop this property, because I just think it's a beautiful piece of property, and it's going to be torn apart, so I vote no.
Okay, and I vote yes. The motion carries for aye and one nay.
I move Resolution 2024-091, Susan McCarthy minus subdivision, resolution granting minor subdivision approval for the subdivision application entitled Susan McCarthy's Minor Subdivision, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
204-029, Cordova Drive-Thru Restaurant Conversion Resulting Granting Site Plan Approval to Convert an Existing 4268-Square-Fit Restaurant Into Two Separate Tennessees. I'll second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 2024-93 Grants Approval For The Minor Subdivision At 230 West Main Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Move Resolution 2024-094, Carson Woods Major Subdivision, resolution granting approval for a preliminary plat for an eight-lot major residential subdivision, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Any public comment from anybody?
Gone. No public.
No minutes today?
We just got them the other day, so I'll put them on in my...
Okay, that sounds good. At this point in time, we're going to go into executive session, and we're going to be discussing litigation on HK Ventures and nothing else. So can I have a motion to go into...
Motion to go into executive session?
Execut.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll be going off the record right now for a short period of time.
Are we off?